Dua pingta utu, dua pingta campsite. This is the camping site of Iriga City, Boy Scout of the Philippines. Welcome to the opening game of campsite, Iria. Hai, hai, patukan-patukan. Ok man, kita kong pati kadi tau saadi. Puluan, donggadimuturo. Palih butun napalan adi. Campsite. Ay, saadi panan. Normal. Ayo, kita makan enjoy ayo. Ta kulo. Ta campsite.
Isa di Aboy Scout, bahagai, percin sagar.
Diro, diro neo, kaabutan pa sa mga pagdus-dus ko tuming. Obayda o. Maren, di naguuran. Padatong galon, private, ah, mga private school too. Private school, kakaibala na easy in see. Iriga City. Good morning, Iriga Council. Good morning.
Let's start our grand opening ceremony. Friends, scouts and scouters, scouting is not just a regular activity.
I had again a day.
It is a long hobbies. It is beyond the scouting of weekend reports. Scouting is a way of life and together we are a worldwide movement. And scouting will learn by doing, by the fun adventurous way. And after five years of hiatus, the BSB Iriga City Council finally opens a new age on rekindling and reinvigoration of our scouting life. Today, the mountains and the hills are calling, the scent of the earth and the grass fills the air once again. The floods and the color rise above the wind. The north, south, central, secondary, and the private schools are here to learn, take an adventure, and work together. Scouts, scouters, and scouting friends, good morning.
Good morning.
This is Camp Arriba, Iriga Springs. And welcome, this is the 29th Boy Scouts of the Philippines, Iriga City Councilwide Jamboree. When we say Boy Scouts of the Philippines, you will say Mabuhay. When we say Mabuhay, you will go back to Boy Scouts of the Philippines, right? Boy Scouts of the Philippines. Mabuhay. Handa na tayo for the opening ceremony. Dear friends, we are now done with the entrance of the delegations for a district. At this moment, we shall now have the roll call to be given to us by the council training commissioner, scouter Dindo Zoilo L. Ibarretta, leader trainer. Scouters, clap. Again, scouters, clap. Good morning. Pumarapang Ang Buhay.
Pumarapang Ang Buhay.
Pumarapang Ang Buhay. Bag na tawad ang saktan. Saktan. Si si gawin ang pinakamalas ng yen. Opok. Ah, si kain, pisahan natin. Nasan namang atang sa kapmasusok. Visima, alaga chairman, sapka masusok, buka. Sapka, buzay. Sapka, parit. Diro, diro, naman ang mga previewan. Ay, diro. Sapka, butangan. Nasan nyong ma taga sapka tunggalon. Alright, nasan nyong ma taga Iriga City Council. Thank you very much and good morning. Thank you very much, scouter Dindo Zoilo L. Ibarretta, LT, the council training commissioner. At this moment, may invite everyone to please arise. All rise, both. For the entrance of colors to be given to us by size outfit number 73. Let us all observe side lights, please. For this jamboree, this will be led by scout Z A Madresa, Iriga Central School, camp scout.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear God, we come before you today eager to learn, grow, and have fun. We ask for your guidance and blessings as we embark on this adventure together. We ask for safety and protection as we participate in our scouting activities and for good weather and favorable conditions. May we be mindful on the environment around us and always seek to protect it. We thank you for the opportunity to be part of this great organization and for the many friendships and experiences we will have as scouts. We ask for your blessings upon our families, our leaders, fellow scouters, and all who support us on this journey. May this time be a time of growth, learning, and fun and may we always remember to do our duty to God and our country, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you scout Z A Madresa from ICS, a ICS camp scout. Scouts and scouters, harap sa bandila, na. We honor our motherland for the unified singing of Pilipinas Kung Mahal. Scouts, please lusa mahal ya. Scouts and scouters, pugay kamay, na. The last all singing in unison, Pilipinas Kung Mahal. Scouts, thank you my command, handa, harap. For the pledge of allegiance to the Philippine flag, may I call on senior scout Matt Ivan D. Sangly, a senior scout from Perfect Well Health National High School.
Scout, say. Sabay-sabay nating, sabay-sabay nating, ah, panunupas sa watawan ng Pilipinas. Panunupas sa watawan ng Pilipinas. Ako ay big ino, bawang at apatang yung ina sa watawan ng Pilipinas. At sa bansang kaninang sila sumisad, mamay dangal, makaruman, at kuyaan. Nagkatikilos na sangbay ng adios, matao, maaalikasan, at makabansan. Handa, harap.
Rededication of a scout of Ello to be led by senior scout Leonardo Jarchenko Q. Mendez, Santiago Integrated School.
Let us recite the scout law in unison. Scout, say. On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God, my country, the Republic of the Philippines, and obey the scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, gritty, brave, deed, and rebel. Ready, run.
The BSB official admission to be given to us by senior scout John L. S. Celitoño from Stand Alone or San Agustin Senior High School, River Circle, number 09.
The BSB mission, to be the leading provider of progressive outdoor based non-formal education committed to develop morally straight, disciplined, concerned, self-reliant citizens in the BSB tradition of world scouting. The BSB mission, to inculcate our scouts and scouters love of God, country, and fellowman to prepare the youth of responsible leadership, to contribute to nation building according to the ideas, principles, and program of scouting.
For the raising of the BSB council flag, may I call on the council chairman, Reverend Father Tito M. Oliva, together with the OIC council scout executive scouter Alex B. Botter, LT. Ladies and gentlemen, the council flag of the Boy Scouts of the Philippines, Iriga City Council. Pugay kamay, na. Thank you scouter Alex and Reverend Father Tito for the raising of the council flag. At this moment, we will now be raising the jamboret flag. To do the honor is our beloved city mayor, honorable Wilfredo Rex C. Oliva, together with our vice mayor, Vice Mayor Edsel Dima Iwak. They will be joined by our council chairman, Reverend Father Tito M. Oliva. The Iriga City Council Jamboret official logo. The Boy Scouts of the Philippines Iriga City Council had always been in the forefront of community development in providing character development and citizenship training for the Iriga new youth, and this had always been the primary objective of all scout leaders and educational leaders. But because of the interruption made by the pandemic, we were put at hold and putting aside this laudable purpose. Now that we are able to outdo these hurdles, it is just fitting that we continue with the vision as envisioned by the founder. Today, we converge in this 29 council-wide scout jamboret to once again rekindle the experience of camp as we share laughters and enjoyment in the adventure and fun-filled activities. The visual logo of the jamboret is a simple manifestation of these diverse feelings that we have today. At the background is the Mount Aso that is a symbol of stability that is well related to us because a scout smiles and whistles at any circumstances and we are not burdened and hindered by adversities. It also depicts the place where we are today, the Camp Iriga Arriba Springs. The rising multicolored sun represented by the sectional colors kid, cub, boy, senior, and robber scouting is a symbolism of hope wherein that in after every hardship, we shall rise. We shall rise again and start a new attempt. At the center of it is a shell with a scout badge in sanakot that represents the 30th or 30th year of Iriga City Council. The strong foundations that makes each and every program and project of the Boy Scouts of the Philippines Iriga City Council effective and successful is the partnership between STO Iriga City, the council itself, and the local government unit. This is represented by their office seals at the bottom of the logo. This time, after five long years, we once again bring you the council-wide scout jamboret, it is 29 year. Happy scouting. Scouts, take my command. Pugay kamay, na. The raising of the jamboret flag. Handa, harap. Thank you so much Mayor Rex, to Vice Mayor Edsel, and to our council chairman, Father Tito, for doing the honor of raising the jamboret flag of this year. And now for the formal opening of the jamboret and to give his message to all scouts and scouters. Friends, please welcome the city mayor of Iriga City, honorable Wilfredo Rex C. Oliva.
Give the masters of the ceremony, Sarah Nap and Sarah Rumel. First and foremost, our praise and thanksgiving to the Almighty for gathering us all here for this very worthwhile undertaking, attending the 29th Iriga City Council Scouts Jamboret. Listening intently to those who asked us to decide the um, scouting, how, what, what, and virtues will tell us all on really what scouting is all about, including the vision. And if only people have started at their young age, of course, being a member of joining the Boy Scout, we will help a very responsible mga ciudadano. And that is part of the advocacy of the Arriba Iriga Administration. Because Arriba is not only a chant that means move or go forward, it is an acronym that stands for, and this is our vision to Iregenyos, as is said, they are responsible. And because of, if really, people will have attended the scouting, discipline, the transparency, and all the other 12 virtues or values of scout, we will have a responsible society. One art is for mga reklamador, in the religioso Iregenyos ang bagong administrasyon. That is what Arriba stands for and Iriga has also has its meaning. The first eye, because we really are assertive on what we want from Iregenyos, kaya exclamation point. The R and D is connecting and a closer look will tell us na wala na ya ismali. And ana ay sabit na amoyan mapah, kanpo ng Iriga, and ana ay ang nasalit kan amoyan, ano si Mount Iriga or Mount Aso. So going back, ano talaga ang kaipuhan ta sa mga Iriga is to help a responsible society and this can be started young. So we are investing on our young children and this is the basic and fundamental para sa mga taupo. Starting early, attending or joining the Boy Scout of the Philippines. When this activity was first presented to us by a council chairperson, Father Tito Oliva, and the council executive, Dr. Alex Botter, during our local school board meeting. Last month, I am compelled to say yes because ano kayang resita ni Father Tito, taupo sa na. Ano nga yan gusto mo, olivo, sponsor. Kaya the local government of Iriga was compelled to act through the request of the Boy Scout of the Philippines Iriga City Council, kaya presentke po kami sa ni. Manan ko, ano nga natin aktibong Vice Mayor, honorable Edsel Sarah N. Iwak, Adi, honorable Jepino Consy, Nikki Kapilbang Lakimas, Consy Danrem Abu Lipe, and nagbest scout Mantanto, bago nakme correct, Consy Danrem Morallo. And we have a constant communication with your older scouters, not only Dr. Alex Pata, San Litusayson, San Budin Sa, Barrenta, and of course, the Herna Namalapo. And siyempre pa, ano dapat Iriga headed by School Division Superintendent Dr. Valeri Guzman. And I was informed that he is presently in Manila attending to any important concerns. Subako po, nakatindal mga ku sa si Bisuwa on the first anniversary of their regional indigenous people center and it was attended also by the Assistance School Division Superintendent kia Mausila Labuta with the Ser Noella Biskitado. Ano nga ciudadkan na Iriga, kinaraso para nila magsoporta. Kana ulo man sa ngamin activities, kana department of education. Kaya any and all activities of a decked are fully supported of and are complemented by the local government of Iriga and scouting is one that is primordial or foremost in the concern of the local government. And I would like also to take this opportunity to extend my gratitude at apart from a decked for this very worthwhile undertaking, but our partners also in the local government unit. So we are here, the Philippine National Police representing our chief of police, Jabez Napoles, Captain Benja Sereno is here, the Bureau of Protection Marshal, sa major Joel Kapintan is here and being the chairperson of the Iriga Subwater District, I believe, kada kita problema sa isang tubig. Lalong-lalong na, tanapun seplino, I was part of it because Iriga is considered as a spring where crystal water can be found, kaya kada kita problema sa tubig, sa supply kana potable water, kalinke Father Tito. And subako sa ulang nabaway na sapka masusok. Kaya ni Prey has been made, sapka masusok i considaday. Ano, considaday. Really, we are investing on young persons for Iriga City to reach the mga vision and to comply and achieve the vision and mission of our city. Kaya to the children, we have this local council for the protection of children and sa mga youth sadly, we have a functional local youth development council because we firmly believe on the provision, sa constitution, on recognizing the vital role of the youth in nation building, which states that the state shall recognize the vital role of the youth in nation building. It shall promote and protect their physical, social, moral, intellectual, and spiritual well-being. It shall inculcate in the youth patriotism and nationalism and shall encourage their active participation in civic events. This scouting event is malapak appropriate kana sinasabi ka, institution and Iriga City being a local government unit, a political subdivision of the state, kami po nagsusupot ka, kami. Kaya congratulations, kana mga prime members po, kininga 29th Iriga City Council Scouts Jamboree na for five years, may ipo nangkaako because of the pandemic and today, ako nakita mga face-to-face activities, so I am enjoying all of the participants to enjoy your stay here, dapat materials sa mga ito, toro, and we are also thankful. We express our gratitude to the parents for allowing your children to participate in this very noble and worthwhile undertaking. Salamat po, kalin yo mga kakigin, and to our offices, the local government. Salamat po, kani niyo mga kakigin, and to our officers, the local government unit, Adadala Sangguriang Panglongso, Vice Mayor Edsel, Sadis Sajdorel, while being actively with Sir Wapi, following up all the requests para makapubay sa bagayuna campsite. Papasalamat po ako sa kinakatinga Engineering Department, kana GSO, CDRRMO, and City Health Office, and other departments or offices and the local government for including the City Architects Office or Architect Day, for providing us with technical and infrastructural support. Also, I would like to express the gratitude of the city and make appreciation to the Mandara family for allowing us to occupy a portion of their land para po kaling campsite. So this is indeed a very worthwhile undertaking. Masabi po kani, kana isa na malata pamusur, na malanyaman nangwan before, coming together is the beginning, keeping together is the progress, and working together is the success. At this early, I would like to congratulate the prime mobiles of this activity for a very successful staging the 29th Council Scout's Jamboree. And also, in order for this is participated in Palan by 53 schools, or 54, 51 of Pablín Elementary and Secondary Schools, and three, Racks, and Mayusan and ACLC. All 54 po, we will be contributing in order for you to the pay some of your expenses. We will be giving 3,000 kada school, and it will be delivered to your time for work at kana Pressure Office, Manikian Sanly. So again, congratulations and mabuhay po, and a Boy Scout of the Philippines. Arriba Iriga!
Arriba! Thank you so much, Mayor Rex Oliva, balapang ra and scouters, clap! Bigyan ang isang bangsa! Ulitin pa la sa pa isang bangsa, bigyan ang isang bangsa! Thank you so much, scouts, and now we will be awarding our token of appreciation to the local government unit of Iriga City through our City Mayor, Mayor Rex Oliva. Sir Galon, citation please.
Voiceless of the Philippines, Iriga City Council, City of Iriga awarded this certificate of appreciation in sincere appreciation and profound gratitude for being an inspiration to the youth by exercising a high degree of leadership and values worthy of emulation, and for sharing his time and presence for the young scouts of the city as guests of honor and speaker. During the conduct of the 29 Councilwide Jamboree, Count Iriga Arriba springs with a theme sustaining groan on October 19, 22, 2023, at Irian Hills, San Nicolas, Iriga City, given this 90th day of October 2023, at Iriga City. Guests of honor and speaker, Honorable Wilfredo Rex Cuba Oliva, City Mayor and the Count Chief.
The honor is our Council Chairman, Reverend Father Tito Oliva, and our OICCSE, Scouter Alex V. Botor, Leader Trainer. With them is our FGO Chief, Dr. Noel Cabaltera. With them as well is our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Edsel Linaibah. Thank you, Mayor Rex, mabuhay, and more power. Thank you so much, LGU Iriga City!
Likewise, another certificate of appreciation will be given to the local government unit of Iriga City through Honorable Wilfredo Rex C. Oliva, City Mayor, and the Sangguriang Panglongso for their support for this year's 29 Councilwide Jamboree.
May I call on po? Our counselors, please join our mayor as we receive the token of appreciation from the Boy Scouts of the Philippines, Consy Che, Consy Diddy, Consy Danrep, and Consy Daday. Thank you so much po! Thank you so much, LGU Iriga City! Search or L, our Fire Marshal, our police and Fire Marshal members.
Smile at scout sign.
Thank you so much, Mayor Rex, and the entire men and women of LGU Iriga City for your full support, for your full support for the Boy Scouts of the Philippines. Okay, huwag mo na kayang mapamamuna, day zero pa lang, wala pa nga tayong module. Ayan, bukas magsisimula ang real activity niyo. At this point, friends, we will be given an inspirational message para malakas ang ating loob bukas sa lahat ng module. In behalf of our SGO, School Division Superintendent, Dr. Marian Abuti Guzman, SO5, friends, please welcome to give our inspirational message a true scouter, our SGO Chief, Doctor and Scouter, Noel Cabaltera. Scouts, clap! Heaven! Mabuhay! Boy Scouts of the Philippines, mabuhay! Nakakapandig balahibo ang okasyon na Telmel, ang ating nagapagdalo at Jernat, ang ating mga MC for this grand opening ceremony. At unang-una, gusto ko magpasalamat sa ating napaka-galang-galang Mayor Rex Oliva, galang-galang Vice Mayor Edsel D. Aywat. Kasama ang buong tropa ng LGU, nakakapandig balahibo. Ang ating mga galang-galang na gawa ng Iriga City, hindi ko na isahain, baka may makalimutan ako. Ang ating PNP, ma'am, I salute. Ang ating Fire Bureau of Fire Protection, I salute to you sir. Ang ating Little Mayor, Jor El Tayaw. Niisa, kasi niisa lang ang Little Mayor, kaya babagitin ko ang niisa lang dyan. Pero, hindi ko makalimutan ang ating mga institutional heads, nandito ang ating napakagaling na dalawa. Ito nga lang pinakamagaling dito, Ma'am Rudy and Ma'am Sanbe. Kasama 'yung mga institutional heads na kasama sa PWG of the Boy Scout of the Philippines. At ang ating mga mangkulang na walang sawang sumuko supporta sa ating mga anak. At ang ating mga kaguan. At ang antosin ang ating Boy Scouting activity, ang ating mga Boy Scout, salamat! Nakalabas tayo na classroom. Hanta alaba! Mabuhay! Okay, hindi ko lang pa ang ating kwento. Sampung pahingan kwento, magsisimula ako sa unang pahingan. Isang araw, isang araw pumunta ako sa school. Papunta dun sa may North District, 'yung sinasabing bukit, North District. Hindi ko sasabihin ang school, pero pagdating ko doon, konting ulan, may umuulan, pangbaba ako sa to or auto ko, may tumakong dalawang bata, may dalang payong, sir, umuulan, oh, sige. Minayungan ako, sabi ko, very good. At pagkatapos, may nakita ko may konting tubig, sabi ko, paano ko makakatawid dyan? Sabi ng dalawang bata, teka muna, sir, pangbalik, apat na sila, may dalang upuan, pinupu ko doon sa upuan. At doon ako tumawid, nakasakay ang upuan. Sabi, sabi ng bata, kapit lang, sir, kapit, oh, sige. Ano 'yung natutunan natin doon? First page, palang. Ang mga bata ay matulungin, ang mga bata ay ba, dish, karte. Oh, 'yan ang mga Boy Scout, dalawang yun, at kayo Jamboree natin, matutunan nyo ang dami-dami mga mga gawain na matututo kayo. So, hantayin lang natin ang sinasabing module, ang sinasabi, Jernat, so 'yan ang ganda ng Boy Scout of the Philippines. At may agridito sa akin si Jor El, ito, kaganapan ito ay, pagdevelop sa ating total personality. Kung kaya, kung akademisyon kayo, maslamang kayo, kasi mayroon kayo matutunan skills and attitude. Dahil ang mga Boy Scout ay magaling ang ugali, hindi sasama ko ni magaling ang ugali. At may mga skills, matutunan nyo simula ngayong gabi hanggang sa katapusan. Kailangan ninyo ang mga skills na iyan para gamitin sa pag-araw-araw. Bakalimitan ang tubig, kailangan magtipi, no, 'yan mga skills na 'yan. Malayo ang paliguan. Wala tayong mga ilaw sa ating tent, kailangan mga skills kung paano ang gawin 'yan, para may lawan. So ending, talagang nakakapandig balahibo ang ating grand opening dahil sa blockbuster ang LGU lahat ng nandito. Parang pangan natin ang ating galang-galang Mayor Rex Oliva. At ang ating Boy Scout of the Philippines, Iriga City Council Executive, ang ating partner, Chair Alex Botor, William. At ang ating Council Chairman, Father Tito Oliva, talagang... Father Tito Oliva, parang pangan natin, pati gabong palang pangan. Kung hindi na kanila hindi matutuloy ang ating Council Sound Jamboree. Sabi nga ni Mayor, piniba tayo magregional Jamboree dito. Sabi ko, Mayor, sige, kaya ito ang talagang ang mga tumaling eh. Napapayay sa pagkarito ang ating sitwasyon. So, 'yun lang ang ating kwento, kailangan ninyo pagpatuloy ang page two at hanggang ten, simula ngayong gabi hanggang sa katapusan. So, parang pangan! Salamat, William Mani, nawala nata General Santom City, na mayroong biya't usapang magkandang mengyayari dyan. Iriga, si Chairman Ay, si Jempre, matutuwa, ang talagang tuwato yun. Nasabihin si Chairman, pumunta kayo. Mabuhay tayo at mabuhay na mabuhay, Chairman Doonin, mabuhay na mabuhay ba? Yon. So salamat ang ating mga institutional heads, na pinaguguna ang ating mga people, principalkor ng superilo arroyo ayun mo na dito, kani na payan na dito, at ang ating principalkor ng tanakto niya horisun, kailangan mga susunod na mga superdito. Parang pangan natin ang mga superdito. Ah, ako lang nasasabinya, ayaw ko si Chairman. Kaya nasabihin si Chairman, nagsabila ko lang, magiging superdito nila. Ayan, ano ba si, tutuloy na namin 'yan ah. So salamat, at nandito tayo lang kayo para makipagtat, tagisan ng cebu at talito. Dahil mga yayayang Boy Scout talent show, may tayo mga pa, pakikilang na 'yung dami. At magtaggrand tayo pa, o matutunan nyo mo paano. Pumara sa Grand Grand File. Thank you so much, at mabuhay! Salamat and good morning! Thank you very much, Scouter Noel Cabaltera, for your inspirational message. Boy Scouts of the Philippines, mabuhay! Bigyan natin ang isang bangsa, si Sir Noel, bigyan ang isang bangsa! Alagin naman, thank you so much, scouts and scouters. At this moment, friends, we will be having the grand mabuhay yell. This will be led by Scouter Sunny G. Kanuto, Assistant Leader Trainer, Deputy Program Commissioner. Sir Sunny, the grand mabuhay yell.
Hello!
Hi!
Hello!
Hi!
Okay, mga bata, scout, mayos na mayos. Okay, ang may scout ay, sa konting si Yas nakukuha kaga, at sa konting kaman nakukuha kaga. Kung hindi mangakuha kaga, hindi ito na 'yung na Boy Scout. Okay, pagginatin, galito ko 'yung kalay ko, gagalito kayo? At sisigaw kayo lang, heaven? Hindi pa. Ano kayo? Pagginatin, galito ko, oray! Arriba, Iriga! O, tayo lang kayo dito, okay, sa pa isang baw. Ready, go! Monet, parang nasan, parang nasan? Wala tayong preyo kung hindi malakas. Nawawala ang mga senior scout, nawawala ang mga rover. Okay, oray! Okay, salamat po!
Nagtakamali kasi nito ro. Thank you so much, Scouter Sunny Kanuto, for the grand mabuhay yell. Boy Scouts of the Philippines!
Mabuhay!
Mabuhay!
Boy Scouts of the Philippines!
And that ends our grand opening ceremony. We will go back to our campsites for your dinner. After your dinner, we will go back here for the scouts, camp talent. Each district po, mayroong tatlong entry maximum.
So let me invite all the sponsors, scouts po, to have a photo opportunity with our City Mayor and the Sangguriang Panglongso as well, as our DNP and DNP representatives.
So the members, may mga over the members have committed a pledge for an official follow-up with our City Mayor, our Vice Mayor, our OICCSE, and our Chairman. Of course, we will be having our councilors' soup and the rest of our stakeholders, the Philippine National Police, the Bureau of Protection, and the CDRRMO. Oh, 'yung iba pong scouts, na lalaki pwede kong maupo sa unahan. Scouts and scouters, please join us. To the kids, enjoy your dinner, see you later at 8pm. Okay po, make sure na walang matatakpan. Tingilam muna tayo, cellphone muna, lahat muna na may cellphone dyan, okay? Lahat muna na may cellphones para di kami naduduling. Okay po, lahat muna na may cellphones, bago 'yung official PIO cameras. Smile! Mga cellphone muna, smile and scout sign, scout sign. Thumbs up pa, thumbs up. Thank you very much, next po, 'yung ating official photography. Okay? Our official documentation? Yeah. Oh, 'yung mga may cellphone ginit na muna, para wag kami maduduling. Okay po, smile lang muna, normal smile. Okay, next po is scout sign. And thumbs up? Baden Powell, baden Powell position, sa mga hindi po nakakalam 'yung... Nakakimkim po, nakakimkim 'yung kamay lang po. Thank you so much po, thank you so much, Mayor Rex, Vice Mayor Edsel. Sangguriang Panglongso. Sangguriang Panglongso, mga Consy, maraming salamat po. BLP National Police, Bureau of Fair Protection, CDRRMO. BLP, National Police, Bureau of Protection, CDRRMO. CSU. CSU. And GSO. And GSO, salamat po. City Engineering and our City Architect Office, maraming salamat po. And the barangay Council of San Nicolas. Thank you so much po, maraming salamat for being with us today, salamat po sa support.
Oy, Kevin, Kevin, ayun. Mga mapapalaban, mapapalaban sa
Nakaipbitin. Ayan, matandala si Sir Nats, ang grade 7 student namin, ay mamanghaman, ayan. Okay po, early dinner na po kayo. Early dinner, we will go back at around 7 o'clock, or 7:30, right? For scouts, got talent. A reminder po, each district mapapalista, maximum of 3 entries per district. Kung mapapalista po, please look for Sir Rod, Sir Terry, and Ma'am Rea. Nasa flagpole area po si Nasa Ma'am Rea area. Nasa may flagpole area po kami, lahat ng may entries sa Scouts, got talent, preferable group. Mapalista na po ay Sir Rod Barogal, Sir Terry Dimima, at Ma'am Rea Riario. Hinintay po namin kayo sa may flagpole area, salamat. And advising to all Scouts and Scoutsers, na panatiliin po nating malinis ang ating camp area at campsite, lalong-lalo na po ang ating ihipan at palikuray. Kapag tayo ay magkakalat sa ating palikuran, tayo lang naman po ang magsasuffer niyan sa buong camp, okay po? At ating mga sea on, okay po? Be respectful po sa susunod na gagamit, okay po? Again, tinatawagan ang lahat ng district, maximum of 3 entries only for the Scouts, got talent, okay? Friends, we would also acknowledge the following, who have been a very instrumental help for the benefit and possibility of our Jamboree. The LGU of Iriga City, held by our honorable Mayor, Mayor Willfredo Rex Oliver. Engineers Office, City Motor Pool, City Electrician and Staff, headed by Engineer Ulysses Ngramba, together with Engineer Batso and Staff, with Engineer Eddie Delmonte, and Engineer Edward Silva. The Architect Office and Staff, headed by Architect Jake Alvaro. The City BRRM Office and Staff. Father Tito Oliva as the Chairman of Council, of the Council. SBS Mariana Piti Guzman as the Council Commissioner and SBS. And private elementary, secondary, and senior high school. The school unit leaders, outfit leaders, and advisors of public, private, elementary, secondary, and actually cooperative grade. The prime waters are Iriga City Water District. The barangay counselors of San Nicolas. The heirs of the late Don Lasamo Madara, through attorney